Half a day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, January 19, 2022. The time is 2:03 PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, January 11, again on Sunday, January 16, 2022, and sent via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on the same days. The Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's AV staff and committee staff, and the host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please state your name for record-keeping purposes prior to testifying. There are... We're gonna hear Bill Number 147-36 this afternoon. Later on this afternoon, we will hear Bill 237-36. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending, beginning with my vice-chair of my committee, Senator Talina Nelson, the sponsor of the bill, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, Senator Telotitikwe. Thank you, senators, for joining us today. All right, so before we hear from those signed up to testify, we will hear from the sponsor to introduce the bill. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my colleagues for attending today, as well as those individuals who intend to testify. Bill Number 147-36 LS is an act to add a new subsection 160.101 to Chapter 160 of Title VIII Guam Code Annotated relative to the privacy of a victim of a sexual offense. Madam Speaker and colleagues, this bill, again, is to establish a new section into Title VIII, which would help to provide some privacy, the protection of the privacy of a minor victim of a sexual offense. And what this will basically provide is that other than the... What will be necessary to provide the accused the information to be able to prepare their defense is that all other information or dissemination of the minor victim's identity, basically, the identity of the minor, as well as where they stay, is held and is not to be open for public inspection unless it is ordered by the court. And so, a violation of this offense will be a misdemeanor and shall be punishable of a fine of not less than $1,000 in imprisonment of not more than one year. Again, what this provides is the protection of the minor victim of sexual offense in as far as their identity, and that's what this bill would propose to provide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. We now have signed up to testify Ms. Jane Flores, the Director of Bureau of Women's Affairs. Ms. Flores?
Thank you, senators. Thank you, half a day speaker Tolanhi and committee members, Senator Blas, and all the senators in attendance this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jane Flores. I'm the Director of the Bureau of Women's Affairs and the Administrator of the Governor's Community Outreach Federal Programs Office. And it is not only in my capacities, in these capacities that I appear before you today, in those capacities, I deal with the issues of sexual assault and domestic violence facing our community and with our federal grants from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Violence Against Women, that address these serious crimes and their effect on our residents. I also appear before you today as a longtime journalist. Trained journalists abide by a code of ethics. One of the tenets of this code, whether you are a member of the International Federation of Journalists, the Society of Professional Journalists, the Radio and Television News Directors Association, the Asia-Pacific Journalism Center, or any other professional journalistic organization, is to minimize harm. The SPJ Code states that journalists should balance the public's need for information against potential harm or discomfort. Pursuit of the news is not a license for arrogance or undue intrusiveness. The Code also states that journalists should, quote, "show compassion for those who may be affected by news coverage. Use heightened sensitivity when dealing with juveniles, victims of sex crimes, and sources or subjects who are inexperienced or unable to give consent." The RTNDA Code of Ethics says virtually the same thing, as well as noting that the right to broadcast, publish, or otherwise share information does not mean it is always right to do so. In other words, just because you can publish the details doesn't mean you should. All media need to abide by these tenets. When we do not, we often do what is called revictimizing a victim, whether it is a sexual assault or another particularly heinous crime. If a media organization relays the details of a gruesome murder over and over again, it is essentially revictimizing the family of the victim each time they hear or read those details. I admit that I have, in my journalistic career, inadvertently revictimized a victim. Many of us have. Believe me, that guilt stays with you when you realize what you've done, and you spend the rest of your career trying not to do it again. Having said all of the above, normally, I would say a bill such as 147-36 is unnecessary. The unwritten rule in journalism has always been not to identify a victim of sexual assault. However, magistrates' reports today are emailed to newsrooms. Consequently, either because of today's immediate dissemination of information or because of ignorance, hopefully it's the former, people oftentimes just simply copy and paste the details of the magistrate's report into a post or a story. Guam is a very small community, so without realizing it, if an individual or an organization provides victims' age, village, and uses that term known to the perpetrator in a public medium, they have essentially identified the victim. We are all supposed to work not to do this. But when the details are provided, and it's deemed acceptable because the victim's name or initials have been deleted, essentially, the victim has still been identified. If it's a case of a child abuse, and of child abuse, and the child's age, grade in school, and the reporting school have been identified, again, because we are a small community, everyone in the school knows who the victim is. And that child has been essentially revictimized all over again. Also, does the public really need to know the specific penetration details of a sexual assault? No. They only need to know that an assault or rape has occurred. Again, it's that copying and pasting of the graphic details from the magistrate's report without thinking that is the problem. One of my duties as GCO/FPO Administrator is to sit on the Sexual Assault Response Team Steering Committee. Not a committee meeting goes by where we do not hear a complaint, either from an advocate organization, a care center, or an attorney about media inadvertently identifying a victim of sexual assault. If this bill makes any entity that deals with sexual assault victims or victims of other heinous crimes, whether it's a news organization, or a blogger, or whatever, think about what they are going to publish or broadcast. It will do some good. I do strongly suggest that the bill be broadened to protect all victims by having the word "minor" be deleted from the bill. No victim of sexual assault, regardless of age, should be identified unless that person specifically states that they want to come forward and be identified. Sijous Massey for the opportunity to provide this testimony on this important issue.
Sijous Massey, Ms. Flores. Now hear from Deputy Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation, Mr. John Morrison.
Good afternoon, senators. It's very nice to see all of you again. I got this proposed bill and read through it, and I spent some time trying to figure out first who it was directed toward. And I have to say first that I don't find myself disagreeing with the spirit of this law or this bill. I've practiced in other jurisdictions before where minor victims were identified in court pleadings via initials. And there didn't seem to be a whole lot of difficulty with doing that after a period of time. However, this bill is so broad that I have to... I have to say that there are better ways to address the concern here, and I believe that would be by a court rule as opposed to a new law. Regarding who this bill is directed toward, there's a number of constitutional problems with the bill depending on who we're discussing. So first, if we're discussing just private citizens, it looks like Section B of this law would make it a misdemeanor crime for them, a private citizen, to disclose just the name of a person. So just by naming someone, a private citizen could be committing a crime here, even though this is in our criminal procedure code. There's a number of First Amendment problems with prior restraint, with the government trying to mandate what a private citizen can or cannot say, even if what they're saying is reprehensible. It's a little different with attorneys. Attorneys, I think, are used to being somewhat tempered in what they say. We have to wear certain clothes when we go into court. There are rules. It's not a free-for-all. You can't just say whatever you want to say. So this seems to be a rule that is... This seems to be a bill that's designed to limit what attorneys would say or what they would say in a filing. So first, is it designed to prevent attorney generals from saying things in filings? Well, it doesn't look like it. I mean, I think everyone would take the position that if an attorney general is in court advocating for a victim, and they slip up and say the person's name rather than their initials, I think we'd be back where we were the last time I testified, with saying that the prosecutor should exercise some prosecutorial discretion and not charge that person with a misdemeanor because they're advocating for the victim. So it's sort of left me feeling that this bill must be designed to limit what defense attorneys are saying in their pleadings and what defense attorneys are saying on the record. And there's a number of problems with that as well. First, if we look at Subparagraph B, again, I believe that this statute would keep us from adequately investigating a case. Sometimes we get information that an alleged victim has made a false report in the past, and the incentive there is to go and interview the family members or the people that are familiar with what happened in that false report. And it's difficult to imagine doing that without revealing what the person's name is. So to the extent this would limit our ability to investigate and provide someone with a fair representation, it seems like this would violate the Sixth Amendment. There just doesn't seem to be any way to do that without disclosing what the person's name is or some identifying information without having to just have them guess what we're there to have them talk to us about. I also sort of imagine a scenario where we would be in trial without the permission of the judge yet, and just based on perhaps clumsiness if this were the law. Some, one of the attorneys would say the alleged victim's name, and I could imagine that just diffusing an entire trial, because what would happen after that is if it were the defense attorney, and this were the law, they would say, "Oh, my God, what have I done? I've just committed a misdemeanor." And they might move to withdraw from the person's case because that client would now be a witness against them at a prosecution for this misdemeanor crime. So this just seems like it would create a lot of unintended consequences if this were the law. But I don't disagree with the spirit of it. I would point the... I would point everyone to Federal Rule of Criminal Procedure 49.1A, and that seems to satisfy all the problems, all the questions. Because if we adopted a similar rule at the Superior Court level in pleadings, in our filings, the minor would be identified via initials, and then there's other confidential information that would have to be redacted, such as how close to an address we give someone in our filings and how much personal information is actually revealed. It seems like that would be a better way to address the issue. If I were on a subcommittee charged with revising those rules, I certainly wouldn't object to something that was styled as 49.1A is in the federal system. So those are... Those are my comments, senators. I'd be happy to take any questions that they have.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Morrison. We were... We sent requests for input on this bill to the Attorney General of Guam, and I read his response earlier. He said, "After a cursory review, we have no concerns or opposition to either bill at this time. We will not be in attendance at today's public hearing, but if there are any questions directed to our office, please let us know. We'll be happy to help address whatever we can." We also sent to the Guam Police Department and to the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence in addition to the regular public notice to the public. There is a fiscal impact note from the Bureau of Budget Management Research. It requested that Bill 147-36 LS be granted a fiscal waiver as it is administrative in nature and would not fiscally impact the appropriations for fiscal year 2021. Legal review on this bill is pending. All right, so we'll begin now with questions. There being no other person here to testify. Well, thank you both for your testimony, and... I'd like to acknowledge the presence also of Senator Brown. Senator Brown, thank you for being here. So we've got with us, of course, Senator Frank Blas, the sponsor of the bill, Senator Talina Nelson, the vice-chair of the committee, Senator Mary Torres, and Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telotitikwe. All right, so my first question would be, what information specifically is provided to an accused or alleged perpetrator of... regarding other criminal offenses in order to ensure that alleged perpetrators of sexual offenses against minors did not have access to address information or other identifier information as much as possible? It seems to me, Attorney Brown, that all this information would be provided to the defense. Is that right? And shared, perhaps, with the potential perpetrator or the alleged perpetrator? Is that right?
Is that for me, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Okay. Well, at this point, typically, I think the sorts of allegations involving strangers are very rare. So it's usually not the case that someone's being provided information with the name of somebody, and they were unfamiliar with them. So, but yeah, usually, if we get a packet of discovery from the Attorney General's office through Guam Police, then it's given to the defendant as part of the normal sharing of discovery so they can review it and help us prepare for trial.
All right, and... In addition to the... Well, thank you for bringing up the federal rule that can be adopted by the courts as to how these pleadings shall name or not name the victims. And there are other provisions of the Code which try to exclude certain information. For example, in AGCA Chapter 91, it says "They will exclude the public from a trial for sex offenses involving minors under the age of 18. The judge may exclude the general public from the courtroom." And... And these are for trials involving crimes of incest, child pornography, criminal sexual conduct. All right. The... In 19GCA, the Child Protective Act mandates when information concerning a victim or alleged victim of child abuse may be released, supposed to be released on a need-to-know basis and only as necessary to serve and protect the child to the following, and it says, "To the multiple disciplinary teams established to assist in the disposition of cases to the courts themselves, as necessary for determination of issue before the court. Access shall be limited to inspection by the court only unless the court determined that disclosure of the records to interested parties is necessary for the resolution of an issue pending before it, some of which include grand juries when connected with a prosecution of a child abuse and neglect case, a physician examining or treating a child, any agency or individual authorized, contracted, or licensed to diagnose, care, or treat a child who is the subject of a report of abuse or neglect." And of course, federal privacy laws. There is a statement that I thought was interesting from the National Child Traumatic Stress Network relative to sexual assault. It remains the most under-reported crime for teens as well as adults. Limits to confidentiality is one of the common reasons for not disclosing sexual assault. And along with other reasons that they list, emotional pain, shame, fear of not being believed, fear of being blamed, fear of punishment or reprisal, feeling partly responsible, other traumatic reactions, fear that nothing will be done, cultural or religious reasons. However, the other side of that was the benefits of the disclosure, at least for the victims, would be prompt medical services, prompt medical examinations, preserving forensic evidence, as well as early identification, prevention, or intervention related to sexually transmitted infection or pregnancy. Also, the ability for the victim to avail of mental health services and legal services. All right, I'm now opening up to the senators for questioning. I'd like to recognize Senator Perez for also being here, Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you for joining us. All right, Senator Blas, the sponsor of the bill.
Here, and thank you. I noticed that Ms. Jane Flores had to leave the hearing, but thank you, Mr. Morrison, for your presence and for your testimony. And I appreciate that you understand in as far as the spirit of the law. And, you know, you're right, this could have been, you know, ruled by a court order. However, I think I felt that it was necessary that this actually be codified so that there is a, basically, a standing and a consistent rule in this measure. I have to agree with Senator, I mean, with Speaker Tolanhi in that one of your concerns with regards to the need for the information, you know, to the accused, I think subsection A provides that assurance that the information that's necessary for the defense, as I had stated earlier, is provided to the accused. Furthermore, yes, I believe it could be for, you know, inadvertent reasons or things that we intend to, or may intentionally or non-intentionally, forget that, you know, the privacy of this victim is probably paramount in these cases. I also recognize, and it's stated too in the piece of legislation, that a lot of this is also, again, subject to court discretion as to who is... It is necessary for this information to be provided to. Again, the intent of this thing is, as has been discussed with members of the Office of the Attorney General, who saw the need and sees the need for the clarification of a rule such as this to protect, in this case, and I appreciate Ms. Flores's suggestion of possibly expanding it to include, you know, all victims of sexual assault, not just the minors, but, you know, this bill just, you know, right now as it stands, it is to protect the minors. It's to protect that privacy. You know, she puts it just right. We, a lot of times, we don't intend to, and unfortunately, what we do is we basically revictimize the victim. It's a traumatic... I mean, I can't speak for experience, but I can speak for, you know, just observation and hearing, you know, many of the horror stories. And listening to, you know, these people long after the trial is done, whether the accused has been found guilty or not. The trauma, you know, of the experience that this individual has and always having to wonder as to whether or not the person standing next to them knows that they were victims of this sexual trauma. And it's to protect them. You know, these are victims. And I do recognize, and as far as the law, that basically says, you know, innocent until proven guilty, and that this information provided. Nothing in this legislation says that it will not be provided. It's to protect the identity of this victim. Outside of that, what is necessary so that justice can prevail. So I want to thank you for that, and really, there's really no question that I would have for this time for Mr. Morrison. I was, I would hoping, actually, that the Office of the Attorney General was present, you know, so they can help to validate and to speak to the concerns and the pre-reasons as to why, you know, we've had this discussion to create this piece of legislation. For that, Madam Speaker, I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues, and then I'll take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Mr. Morrison, can you please just clarify for us? If magistrate's complaints are being sent to media, is that also being done where magistrate complaints name minor victims? Or do the magistrates name the minor victims?
Senator, I'd be happy to answer that. If I can just clarify one point relative to the bill, it wasn't my concern that the information wasn't being provided to the accused, but that it would put us in a situation where our investigative team wouldn't be able to go out into the field and talk to people that know this person and ask them questions without revealing their identity, which appears to be a misdemeanor if this were the law. I think that would prevent that critical function from occurring. Relative to magistrate's complaints, it is not my impression that the news media is given unredacted versions that would include a minor victim's full name. I believe that that office goes out of its way to identify people via initials. I think Ms. Flores's point was a good one, though, that there are oftentimes, if you read a magistrate's complaint and reading between the lines, and I don't think you have to be a genius to do it, you can figure out that this was this girl's stepdad, or this was this girl's relative, based on the way it's styled. And there's a reason that they have to do that. They have to do that in certain cases to prove that this was a family member that might elevate the crime to a first-degree criminal sexual conduct, where it might otherwise be a lower version of a crime. So unfortunately, that's a situation without, I think, any good answer that to satisfy the magistrate that there's probable cause to allege that these crimes occurred, they have to disclose certain information, or else the complaint is going to be thrown out. So I don't believe that this bill would necessarily fix that. I don't think there is a way to fix that. Unfortunately, when people are alleged to have committed these crimes, they have to plead probable cause, and sometimes that sort of a painstaking analysis of what is alleged to have occurred and by whom.
Thank you. Attorney Morrison. Senator Talina Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney Morrison, so it seems that the way this bill is written could potentially harm investigations going forward. Is that what you're saying?
That's my belief. I think if you read this to the strict letter of the law, it seems that if my investigator goes out into the field and says, "Excuse me, sir, I understand that alleged victim X, identifying the person via name, falsely accused you five years ago," or whatever it is, "can you tell me about that?" They would be disclosing the name of an alleged victim of sexual assault. So I would hope that there would be an exception for that if this got much farther. But it looks like the way it's currently drafted, that situation would occur, and it would recur fairly quickly. We sort of have an obligation here to give people a fair defense and go out and find whether or not the allegations hold water.
Okay, so from what I'm understanding is that the intent of this bill is to protect the privacy of a victim. Is there a... Is there a way that we can perhaps craft the measure to meet that intent and not interfere with the investigatory process?
Well, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a way to carve out a number of exceptions in this law. I would say, though, if this were part of a a rule of the Superior Court, a violation of it wouldn't be treated with a trial and due process as as that a trial would afford. It would be treated with contempt. And if the violation occurred directly in front of the judge, they could, they could summarily punish the person who had offended the law or the court rule without the need for some of what's envisioned here.
Madam Chair, may I ask this a question to the sponsor? Is there a way that we can move forward without the limitations or the cause of the investigation process in order to protect the rights of the victim in a way, in a manner of this bill correcting it?
No, ma'am, to answer that question, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the concern. Subsection A does provide that, you know, in instances such as that, if you read on, it just not is or says that this information shall be disclosed so that the accused in that particular crime can can basically, you know, build the defense, but it also says, and time as such information is available to persons accused of other criminal offenses. So there is a way to be able to provide it in the course of the investigation. You know, in the course of the investigation, we recognize that sometimes the identity of this of this individual is going to be exposed. I think the concern here is outside of that course in investigation, as was concerned that was brought up by 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 Ms. Flores, of inadvertently or sometimes inadvertently providing that information through sources of information outside of what is necessary for a a defendant or or a suspected individual to 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 prepare their defense for this.
Mr. Morrison, are you done? Senator Blas, my apologies.
This is.
I think you froze.
How about now? Much better?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, yeah, I believe that, you know, and I, I, you know, recognize and the concern that was brought on by Mr. Morrison. However, I believe that as crafted, and again, this, you know, the the individuals that helped me craft this, this legislation are members of the Office of the Attorney General in that it does recognize that there's going to be a need that some for this identification to be necessary for those accused of a crime, whether it be this crime or previous crimes, to be able to build the defense around. So it doesn't violate that law. And then it also gives discretion for the court in as far as the parameters as to how this is going to be set.
Mr. Morrison, do you agree with that? Attorney Morrison, do you agree with that interpretation?
Well, unfortunately, the way the way I read it, I read A to talk about the material itself being available and being able to provide that to the defendant. So if that's just being provided to the defendant, it's not disclosing it to other people. And that may well be part of the the defense investigation function. I think that looks more clearly to me to be covered by B and says that disclosing it to another person is a misdemeanor. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that the intent here is that the defense function still can function. However, I I think that language in A is is vague enough that it would give me a lot of concern about telling my investigators to go out and disclose information based on, based on a reading of that alone.
Thank you, Attorney Morrison. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I think, Madam Chair, if I can, you know, in response to this concern, again, it is not the intent of this legislation to basically allow the latitude and and for to be able to set those parameters. It is outside of those parameters that it's not permitted. Okay, if the court so deems that this information is necessary, then so be so be it.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator Nelson. I recognize Senator Torres. Senator Tigley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for attending, Mr. Morrison. I listened to some of the comments that you're making, and I'm very concerned about it. I think we may need the Attorney General here to get a different perspective, you know, having more attorneys on the table may even be more confusing at some point, but I think hearing different perspectives is important. And one of the concerns I have is basically where this bill is being placed in the Guam Code annotated in Chapter 160, Victims' Bill of Rights versus going to instead moving it to Chapter 161. I don't know if you're totally, you know, familiar with the the different chapters, but would you say that if anything was to be moved forward in this, the intent, that it should be in Chapter 161 instead of 160?
Who are you addressing that question to, Senator?
Attorney Morrison, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I can run and gun pretty well, Senator, but I'm afraid I wasn't necessarily prepared for where this should be placed. I would say that in having it in our criminal procedure title and and alleging and and giving the attaching a misdemeanor crime to it is a little unusual for that statute or for that title. I see what you mean about putting it in Section 161, that that deals more with compensation when victims are wronged, and perhaps this would would find a good home there if it were adopted. I, I understand what you're, what you mean.
Okay, thank you. Also, in in the legislation that was written, do you think it's really necessary, or have you ever come across where the the judge or the court orders for anything to be publicized? And it's the last section on the right before effective date, the provisions of this section shall not apply to publications made by order of the court. Has the court ever ordered any types of publications of hearings with regards to what transpired? I mean, because if you see this section I'm talking about on the second page?
I see it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the intent there is exactly. I think it would be unusual for a Superior Court judge to issue a ruling, a decision and order that identified a minor victim via name as opposed to initials. In the Supreme Court, when they issued their opinions and all the pleadings that come before that, there's a, there's a rule in that court that requires that minor victims be identified via initials. I think it even applies to victims in general, that they just be identified via initials. And then I, and then the Supreme Court always follows suit and identifies people via initials. I'm not sure what publication we would need to watch out for. I certainly can't imagine a notice in a, in a newspaper or something including this sort of information, so I'm not sure what, what we're after there.
Okay. Okay, I was just wondering if that, if you've seen it anywhere else in in law to prohibit something like this. Or the other question I have real quickly is, you know, what other measures are currently in place, you know, assuring the confidentiality of minor victims of criminal sexual conduct and other crimes covered by Bill 147? Are you aware of?
Well, there are the, there are the sections that Madam Speaker mentioned, the introduction of her comments. So those, those do exist for sure. I think I think it again sort of boils down to figuring out what the harm is that we're targeting. Certainly, it sounds like from Ms. Flores's presentation, and I was prepared to say that I believe the press does a good job with this, they don't, they don't reveal minors' names that I've ever been aware of. It's its initials, but some of the information in the magistrate's complaints is clearly, if you read it closely, is going to tell you volume. So I think that's fair to say, but again, that's, that's public information that the press is printing. I am not aware of private citizens coming to court or getting their hands on pleadings and and broadcasting who the names of minor victims are. I just haven't, haven't seen like anything like that occurring. I think perhaps what we're after here is defense attorneys and their pleadings identifying people only via initials as opposed to a name, but again, nobody seems to get their hands on those documents and try to, try to make a story about it. So I'm not, I mean, clearly, I think minor victims and any victim should feel comfortable coming to court, should never have to feel embarrassed or intimidated by anything that's going to go on in there. But I'm just not aware of situations where this has been, has been a problem outside of disputes about whether or not somebody should have been named in a pleading that only took place in court, that no one, no one printed anything about.
Lastly, you mentioned earlier about another jurisdiction with regards to using, you know, those abbreviations or, you know, their initials. What other jurisdiction would have this type of legislation? And is it similarly close to the way it's written now, or is it something that is quite different?
I think many jurisdictions have adopted something, but it's usually via court rule. And the court rule that I referenced, the federal court rule 49.1 specifically limits in identifying information to the last four digits of a social security number or taxpayer ID number, the year of an individual's individual's birth as opposed to the month and date, the minor's initials can be used, last four digits of the financial account, and the city and state of the home address as opposed to, as opposed to a numerical address and that sort of thing. So this exists in a federal court rule. It could exist as a, as a Superior Court local rule. In other jurisdictions I practiced in Alaska, and there was a requirement there that in every pleading that we submitted, that there was a little box at the bottom where we had to initial and verify that we hadn't put information into our pleading, like what I've just referenced in the criminal or in the federal criminal rule, that we haven't identified an address. And I believe that even applied to domestic violence cases. I'd have to go back and look. It's been 15 or so years at this point. But, but I came from a jurisdiction where we did it via court rule, and it wasn't a huge problem to, to identify people via initials and not say the, where their home address was unless we needed to put it under seal for information of the court.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you so much for that information. And Madam Chair, I totally look forward to hearing the other comments from other, from the AG's office. I know there's some concerns, and I think that we should really take caution and make sure those concerns are addressed, because I would hate to put attorneys or the courts in a situation where they are getting tons of misdemeanors attached to their names because of this. So I greatly appreciate the time and the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tigley. And it looks like from the Attorney General's email that he will not be submitting testimony unless there are specific questions addressed to him. Please let the committee know if there are any specific questions that any of the senators would like addressed.
Madam Chair, if I may, then make the request that the comments made by Attorney Morrison with regards to the misdemeanors and issues that he brought up be forwarded to the Attorney General for his response.
All right, we will forward those. We'll now recognize Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have any questions. I understand the intent of the bill and certainly supportive of that. So I have, I have no questions or comments further. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Senator Tony Ada or Senator Sabina Paris, would you have any questions? If not, then we allow the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Madam Speaker, and then thank you, Mr. Morrison, once again. You know, I know that, you know, the intent of this, you know, this legislation and the intended conversations, this discussion here is to make so that there that that justice does prevail, but then also recognizing that, you know, you're innocent until proven guilty, and you need the tools necessary to be able to, 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 you know, bring on the defense without any fear of violating any law. I have to agree with Senator Tello and also second that request, that request to the Attorney General's office to be able to, you know, address some of the concerns that were brought on by 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 Mr. Morrison. I'm not, you know, I believe that this legislation does and will not hamper it, but again, you know, it's good to hear from them too as to what their perspective is. Again, you know, the whole intent of this legislation is to protect the identity of that victim so that, as was stated by by Ms. Flores, we don't revictimize the victim. And, you know, it's not their fault in, in, you know, that they were the victims of this crime, and, and, you know, we need to be able to protect them, you know, you know, from, from, from being further harmed. And that was the intent of this legislation. I want to thank, again, the the members of the Office of the Attorney General, you know, first off, for bringing this, the attention. And just to answer the question in as far as Senator Tigley's question, query of whether this existed in other jurisdictions, yes, this, you know, there is model, there's model legislation as well as law. I think this is from Minnesota, as you know, where many of our criminals, sexual assault statutes have been, have been modeled after, and so it it does exist. There, and there are very different variations, you know, one that basically says as codified here, that that other than a rule of the court that is codified so that it is a permanent rule, I felt that it is necessary that that we go the route of codifying it. And I look forward for this continued discussion, hopefully response from the, from the Esot. But then to move this piece of legislation onto the for further debate, again, at the end of the day, it's the intent here. And I don't think that anybody, there's nobody here that can disagree with this, is so that, you know, we protect that victim, you know, from, from further harm. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. There being no additional testimony in regards to Bill Number 147-36 LS, the committee will consider this bill duly heard. The committee will remain open for submission of additional written testimony for the next 10 working days until February 2, 2022. Testimony can be sent via email to senator terlaheguam@gmail.com or hand-delivered to my office here at the Guam Congress Building. So at 3:00 PM today, we will have a hearing on Bill 247-36. Those wishing to attend who are currently on Zoom can remain on this same Zoom link. Otherwise, the public hearing on is currently adjourned, and the time is 2:51 PM. See you this morning.